I will open this public hearing for August 13th, 2024 on the comprehensive plan. We'll read the guidelines for this public hearing. The Town Council of Centerville, Indiana encouraged and received public comment at a public hearing on August 13th, 2024 regarding the comprehensive plan. Persons attending the meeting may address the Town Council on the above proposal or any other matter during the public comment portion of this hearing. The Council will accept public comments by those attending the hearing for a maximum of 15 minutes. Each speaker will have an opportunity to speak up in three minutes. Those giving public comments shall leave remarks in three minutes. However, the maximum time for the comment may be extended within reason so that everyone who wants to speak will have an equal opportunity to do so. These public hearing comments should sign in. If you haven't signed in, please sign in and approach the microphone once the chair recognizes the speaker. Persons giving public comment should please state person's name and address before giving comment. Please be aware that the Town Council is not required to respond to public comment during this hearing and will not answer questions during the comment period. With that, clerk, would you read the comprehensive plan?
Okay. The town is applying for planning grant funds from the Office of Community and Rural Affairs to complete a new comprehensive plan that will allow for sustainable growth for the community and will serve as a guide for future decision making. The town's current plan was completed in 2003, 21 years ago. Most of the items have already been completed. Others no longer reflect the current vision of Centerville's values and growth opportunities. The purpose of the comprehensive plan is to anticipate and guide growth in a manner that promotes economic development while retaining quality of life. The plan is a policy document adopted by the town that serves as a guide for decisions about the future of roads, housing, businesses, parks, and other land uses. It is often reviewed by businesses thinking about relocating to a community. They will review the land use maps and see how property is zoned. Once the plan has been completed, the town can use that process to evaluate and update current zoning ordinances to help implement planned recommendations. The town has selected Lockmueller Group to do the plan. The planning process will include public participation activities such as setting up a steering committee, project website to serve as a means of collecting input and distributing draft documents, public workshops, online public workshop, focus groups, and stakeholder interviews, open house to present materials to the public for their review and input, public presentation of completed plan, the timeline. It is expected the entire planning grant process will take around 10 months, which includes 60 days for OCR to review the plan and give their approval. OCR allows 18 months to complete the entire planning process. The project budget, the total project cost is $59,600. The OCR grant portion is $50,000. The local match portion is $9,600. Important deadline dates, the grant application is due November 15th, 2024. The grant award is December 19th, 2024. And, yeah, that's it. Thanks. That's fine.
We really do need some comments.
Would anyone like to make a comment on that? We need some comments so we can show OCR in there.
Mr. President.
Yes.
My name is Jack Botter, 21, 22-year-plus resident of Centerville, and I've only served the board for the last 11 with the planning commission since we got it back in motion in the last four years. Centerville is grobed more than any other community by census that you've talked about in the last two censuses, 10 and 20. We need to look forward to what community development we can do with this plan, comprehensive plan, we can move forward on housing developments, business developments, making sure money stays within the community and comes into the community. Bettering the community does a lot of things for all of us, especially us as residents. It keeps our value of our homes up and increases those values. It helps with future businesses and people willing to be part of our community. And when I say part of our community, even though this directly affects Centerville, the town, and Centerville Township, it affects eastern Indiana and Wayne County as well. I can't think of enough things to say to move forward. You know, we've done a lot of things with our fire and roof departments and our utilities, and moving this town forward is definitely the process to go against grant. You're looking at $50,000 to almost $60,000 spent in the money waste spend. So with any other comments that anybody could come forward to say that over the last 10 to 20 years, which in the first one was, we can definitely move forward and do this again and cover another 20 or 25 years. And this helps us with all kinds of other grants and stuff through the town, helps the town move forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Anyone else?
You really need one because he completed the old one.
Yep. Yeah, that's one thing that we have done. When we did one in 2003, we actually finished it, you know, earlier, I'd say in about 16, 17 years, we actually had completed that plan, what was planned out for the community. And so now, as times have changed, we need to look at where we need to go as a town for several things. You know, just the demographics have even changed in our, you know, in our community. So, and we need to look at those. Branching out, there's a huge need for housing around here. And so that's an area in there that we need to, you know, take a look at. Businesses, we've got some more inquiries for businesses here. All those things have to go into this plan. So, you know, that's why we'll have committees put together whenever we get down the road here a little bit. And there will be a survey be mailed out in your utility bills for things for you to say that you would like to see. And then we would like to hear other things that maybe that's not in that survey that you would like to see in this community. So, anyone else want to speak?
I know we applied for a lot of grants over here, but none are as important as what this one is. This is the future of the town.
As I said earlier, this comprehensive plan is just the roots of a tree. And our tree can get bigger and it can blossom. And to make this community flourish with education, business, housing, community events, the businesses are here already that are doing community events that really help. And those are the things that if you have any ideas, you know, you think we need example addition to a new park, or we need an addition to the Bald Islands and things like that over the years that have made this community what it is, that's where we need to head with this and then make our proverbial tree of the community.
We have one back there.
I've only got three minutes.
Give us your name and address.
Chloe Brown, 304 South Morton. Am I good?
Yeah.
First, I know that Main Street had a portfolio put together a couple of years ago. I know it's outdated now, but it was put together on a description on how to beautify Centerville, from everything, from sidewalks to how you could make buildings more accessible to, like, you know, wheelchairs and that sort of thing. There was a breakout from how we could add more green space. Has anybody looked into having one of those done for something like this for the town from the Town Council perspective? I know we hired somebody to come in and do that. I think it was through Purdue to put, it's like a full, and I can bring that to you.
We have.
Okay, okay. You know, I think that's something maybe we open up, and that's big.
And that is something the engineers will look at.
Yeah, yeah. We opened it up this year because we were talking about applying for a grant, and I know that was something, there's anything from $500 projects to $59,000 projects on that list. Not necessarily a money action that we can take, but a, just kind of a planned movement that we can do to better our town is I think we need to create a park board. I know there, I've got paperwork that shows that there was one that had been created at some point for Centerville. There's things going on that I think there needs to be a park board deciding on. You know, from the Main Street perspective, there was that Hines and motions path. There's a pergola going in. I think there's things that maybe we need to have involvement from all different parties to vote on so we can let our committee know, you know. I didn't know there was a pergola being put in the park until I saw it in the Western Way news. And I'm on Main Street, and that's a Main Street committee. I want to know, you know. So I think we need to create a park board of some sort and involve, and let that be made up of a Town Council person, a Main Street individual, a farmer's market individual so that things can, A, benefit our town that way. I think the park is our meeting place as a town, but also so it is fair for all people involved.
Anyone else?
You just mentioned the park, Gary Holbert, 302 North Morton. When I first came onto this board, 1996, there was nothing whatsoever but rabbits and squirrels running around the park.
Yeah.
And look where it is now.
Oh, yeah, it's great.
So that just tells you that if you open your eyes and work with your hands, what can be accomplished.
Yeah. Anybody else? Comment.
Josh Tudor, I think we all see in this community involvement. I think we get a lot of positive involvement from our small businesses, from Main Street, and even those that aren't here at the meetings or they're not showing support or criticism publicly in a forum like this, they're showing on social media. We have the attention of the community. For boards like this, it's going to require participation. And I think that's a positive, that we could, we could all step up and do a little bit more and have something to do with the change in the community and the growth of the community rather than just having something to say. So I would support your ideas. I think it's a good idea. I think moving forward, we just have to understand that it requires participation in person to show up and to do what needs to be done rather than just talking about it.
I just want to add to that. Main Street as a whole has taken an accessible approach. So we have Zoom meetings every month. So if you can't come and do this, we have a 15-minute lunch meeting every month where you can go voice your opinion. So I think making it accessible to everybody, you know, some people work their shift and can't be here and voice their opinion, making it accessible to all people, I think, is important.
Anybody else? If not, then I would entertain a motion to close this public hearing. Comprehensive plan, I've got a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by David. Can we call the roll, please?
David Cate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Botter.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Waters.
Aye. Motion carried. We will open the Centerville Town Council meeting for August 13th, 2024. We call the roll, please.
David Cate.
Here.
Josh Tudor.
Here.
Jack Botter.
Here.
Gary Holbert.
Here.
Dan Waters.
Here.
Has everyone gone over the minutes for July 9th, 2024, a special council meeting? Are there any additions or corrections to those?
I make a motion we pass them.
Got a motion by Gary. Accept those. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second one by Jack. We call the roll, please.
David Cate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Botter.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Waters.
Aye. Motion carried. Has everyone gone over the minutes from July 30th, 2024, work session? Are there any additions or corrections to those? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept those.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I make the motion we accept those units.
Got a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Josh. We call the roll, please.
David Cate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Botter.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Waters.
Aye. Motion carried. Has everyone gone over the claims? Are there any questions, additions, corrections to the claims? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the claims. So I got a motion by Dave. David, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Gary. We call the roll, please.
David Cate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Botter.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Waters.
Aye. Motion carried. Have a motion to approve the billing adjustment of $20.69.
Mr. President.
Yep.
Who signed off on this?
Sarah would have been the one that...
But she didn't put her name on it.
Oh, she did.
Or it's not on my...
I didn't get a copy, so I don't see.
So it was Sarah?
It was Sarah, yeah.
Mr. President, I make a motion we accept this.
Okay, got a motion by Gary to accept that. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Josh. We call the roll, please.
David Cate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Botter.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Waters.
Aye. Motion carried. Motion to approve the allowance report. I have a motion by Gary. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second by David. We call the roll, please.
David Cate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Botter.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Waters.
Aye. Motion carried. Main Street? Anybody have a report from Main Street?
I do want to say that we did have a good community turnout on Friday. Five hours' notice, that's the busiest night they've had in a year. So we are making moves. And thanks, Ed, and his wife for serving popcorn last Friday. We really appreciate it.
We've updated the deck down there. We've pressure washed it, cleaned it, restained it. We put down some anti-skid slip strips on the deck to make it more safety purposes. We've been staying open on the second Saturday of the month to 7:00 along in conjunction with the farmer's market, and by doing so, we've increased our visitors to the caboose by about 50%.
Well, I think we're finally ready. We need to make sure that power is up and running on Thursday prior to...
No. We will have one tower through our two, so your water will be limited.
No, power.
Power?
Yeah.
It will all be up and ready for you.
Okay, on Thursday because we have a lot of the food vendors come in and they have to check everything out before they get the hot stuff.
So I assume Grand Creek will be closed Thursday then?
Yes, according to the, what we have on the five-year plan. I don't believe that will thing.
I don't plan on closing Grand Creek off until the afternoon school traffic and work traffic clears out.
Yeah, in the, later afternoon. We will be spraying for bugs and stuff in the park on Sunday before. We will be keys to the restrooms. I'm hoping to get those on Wednesday so I can go in and do a quick cleanup check if anything needs wiped down or whatever.
You have to stop picking up the cord for all this.
We will be having Porter Jones come in. It'll be later Thursday, probably early Thursday evening put in place, and they will be picked up by Monday. And after, this is only a possibility, probably not going to happen, but just in case, after 4:00 PM on Friday till about noon on Sunday. If something would happen to our system, we might be on your channel. But that's never happened. So I'm hoping nothing, nothing happens. Okay, for possible problems with electric or water during the festival, who do we contact?
You'll contact me.
Okay. That's all we're needing to know. And the garbage truck will be available for...
If you're requesting it, I will have one up to you.
Yeah, and we will, I will put Kevin in charge of that so that there's no issues. And I think that's all I have.
Police department?
I don't have anything other than to make sure they'll receive my monthly report for a month of July.
Kevin?
Well, I'd like to remind you all that registration is open to the AIM Summit. It will be October 8th through the 10th. And those of you wishing to attend, the hotel bookings through the AIM block opens at 9:00 AM on the 15th, 10th. Just a reminder to you.
Where's this held at?
Fort Wayne.
At the Grand Wayne Convention Center.
I think I got it in the mail just yesterday or something.
But remember, if you want to book a room, you want to have somebody on the phone at Okay, and you should have quotes for the new council podium that you turned in. I ask that you review them and make a decision on how you want to move.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I looked over those and all of the council members. I'd like to make a motion to have Kevin forward the authorization of the office construction.
I have a motion by Jack to allow Kevin to move forward with Andrew Roberts' construction, and that cost us $6,890. Do I have a second?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'll accept that motion knowing that there was two bids, and he was a host bid.
Got a motion and a second. We call the roll, please.
David Cate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Botter.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Waters.
Aye. Motion carried.
That's all I have under my desk.
Anything under the bill?
You didn't leave me anything.
Streets?
I believe we're getting streets.
Water and fire?
I'm glad you brought that up. Because I took a tour tonight before I came in here, and they're definitely working on the west tower. I took pictures of them waving at me on top. I wish I was up there with them, but tell us what we got, Kevin. Well, I'll start off by telling you the east tower's now back in full operation. We did drain the west tower yesterday. They have started work on it today. And I'm going to ask each of you should have had a copy of pad number one for the project on the east tower in the amount of $208,352. I ask if you approve of that so that we can get the paperwork started. That's all I have.
Got a motion by Gary. Do I have a second? Second. I have a second by Josh.
I still think this is a great bid because we're still under a major on both of them. Go ahead.
We call the roll, please.
David Cate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Botter.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Waters.
Aye. Motion carried.
And the main replacement project is moving along right now. They hope to have a second and a third crew in shortly to move the process along a little way. That's all I have under water. Your next.
All right. Well, evidently Ted and I are having a competition, or a competition, if who can speak the least, then tonight I'm going to lose. So for the month, for the month of July, we were dispatched to 76 fire runs, 48 medical, 11 fire, and then seven would fall under our other category, and 10 motor vehicle Last week, I attended the Indiana Fire Chiefs Academy and graduated from that with a certification to the State of Indiana and three from the Nashville Fire Academy. It was a very good class. It's mandatory for all fire chiefs in the state of Indiana, but I learned a lot of information that I'm able to bring back to better serve our fire department and the town itself. So I'll let you guys know that I got that completed at no cost to any of us. And I also need to bring up, the Friends of Dennis Spears are going to be hosting a benefit for him. We're going to do it Sunday, August 25th. It'll be right after Archway Days. It's going to be held at Fire Station Number One on South Morton. We're going to start at roughly 9:00 AM and go until we run out. It'll be breakfast style, pancakes, sausage, bacon. We're looking for donations to be able to provide more money to be able to give to Chief Spears and his wife through his health issue battle that he's going through right now. If you have any questions, you can contact Missy Mantu or Phil Babel, and if you need those phone numbers, I can give them for you. those phone numbers, I can give them for you.
What time is it?
We're starting high daily. And all of the money raised will go directly to Dennis and Les Spears. That's all I got.
Waste water, storm water?
I am still filling out requests from the DOE on the grant. With everything they're asking and the way it's going, I do feel we are moving forward with it. We are, had no outings to report outside of the routine scheduled for maintenance. We've replaced four poles last month. That's all I got under electric.
Anybody else have anything? Clerk? Let me make these announcements. Our work session will be August the twenty-seventh at seven P M. here in the council room. And don't forget Archway Days, August twenty-third, twenty-fourth. And then also a reminder that the school is in session. We'll watch out for the kids, school buses. Been all summer, we haven't dealt with that now. The old school's in session, so please be careful out there with our kids. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the town council, Centerville Town Council meeting for August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. All in. Got a motion by David. Second by Jack. Or Gary. Will you call the roll please?
David Cate.
Aye.
Josh Tudor.
Aye.
Jack Bodger.
Aye.
Gary Holbert.
Aye.
Dan Waters.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.